Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service and Mark Pan from, where is it? Kedville Fire Department, going to present the award tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient Reed Wynott of the Bridgewater Fire Department.
Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary.
With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire service have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to safeguard communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donations from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your fire hall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Glad to see everybody's here.
I'd just like, well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are very privileged to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Have a motion to approve. The agenda is circulated. Councillor Caldwell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Donald, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Are there any presentations? I don't know. Donald, has anything to update on lobster call going on? No? No more claws? Councillor Fager?
Yeah, I have a couple events just wanted to make note of. This week, Thursday, February 13th, is the Economic Outlook Business Mixer, put on by the Bridgewater Area Chamber of Commerce. So that will be held at Oregans Toyota, and it's an event that offers an opportunity to network and connect while enjoying thoughtful, creative lobster-themed catered bites and refreshments. The evening will feature an insightful discussion on the South Shore's economic outlook and essential conversation for business leaders and community members alike. So the tickets, you have to RSVP. I think the deadline is tomorrow, so there's still time to do that. You can do that through the Bridgewater Area Chamber's website. Also, next week is also put on by the Bridgewater Area Chamber. There's a free tax help for small businesses, so there'll be, this is put on by Kendra Smith. She's a liaison officer with the Canada Revenue Agency, and it's going to be held at the multipurpose room at the ELSI. So again, you do have to RSVP, and that's being held from 9:00 till 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 20th. So just something for you to know.
Thank you. Any other? Councillor Warner?
I have a couple, and first, I'd just like to acknowledge a group of grade nine students at Bridgewater Junior High School, sorry, that have teamed up to create the first annual Dylan Shapu Memorial Basketball Tournament. This tournament takes place at the junior high school February 14th and 15th. Dylan lost his life at a very young age of 13 years old while on vacation with his family last February. This particular group of students, they've all worked extremely hard to put this tournament together, and this is to remember their friend and teammate. So well done to those students, and it's going to be a great, great event. Also, I just want to remind the public that this Friday is the annual Gift from the Heart Radio-Thon on CKBW and Country 100.7. This year's focus is to raise funds for MOLI, which is going to bring advanced technology to South Shore Regional Hospital. It's basically a surgical aid that physicians will use when treating breast cancer. I'm not going to try to get into explaining how that all works, but I know it is state-of-the-art and will very much help patients and physicians as well. And to expand on that, I also want to say I was at a fundraiser this past weekend at 902 Athletics. Owner Joel Holland and his team did a wonderful job pulling the community together for a day of stories, some exercise, and we had a lot of fun. And thanks to some extreme generosity, and I use that word extreme to take that to heart, that this day raised over $11,000. That'll go directly to Radio-Thon. So kudos to everybody that participated and to a nice, good local business owner.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to acknowledge that we're coming up on the town's birthday, which means we have wrapped up a full year of celebrations for the town's 125th, and I just wanted to acknowledge staff, thank you for all the work that's gone into keeping the party going for the last 12 months, as well as the members of the community and the businesses and organizations that got on board and helped us to celebrate and brought some really great projects and exciting events to the town for the last 12 months, and I don't think it's stopping, so keep checking the Bridgewater website because I think it's kind of created some momentum that's going to continue on.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. It was quite a year to celebrate our 125, and yeah, without staff, we wouldn't have had half the event, so definitely a memorable year. Yeah, what was I, I totally lost my train of thought. Are there any other presentations? I have one. It's, you know the book Flat Stanley? You know who I said? So this is Flat Giselle. This is from a grade five student in Vancouver. So their class learned about Flat Stanley and then mailed their, they drew themselves and mailed it to various people across the country. So I got this random letter from this Giselle, Vancouver, saying, "Can you please take my Flat Giselle around your community with you and take some pictures and then write me back? It's for a class project." So I'm just letting you know because Giselle is here and going to be kind of hanging out in the meeting with us, and maybe she'll watch council and see that she's there. Julie was kind enough to laminate it for me because it's been in my pocket since I got it like three weeks ago. It went to the ELSI meetings. It's going to the Sustainability Conference tomorrow in Fredericton, and I will have it on hand when we go up and get the award and hopefully get some pictures, so, because obviously I want Giselle to do the best in her presentation, so. Anyway, if you see me around, you're going to see Giselle with me, and yeah, if I'm snapping pictures and I have this thing in my hand, that's what that is. I thought it was a great idea. And then there was an accompanying letter from the teacher explaining, first of all, this is legit, but also this is what they're doing, and hopefully you'll participate. Yeah, I thought it was a great idea, so that's why that's there. If there's nothing else, down to announcements. We'll have a proclamation on the town's website and Facebook page for February 13th, which is Wear Red Canada Day. So heart disease is number one killer of women worldwide and the leading cause of premature death for Canadian women, and so February 13th is Wear Red Canada Day, and so that proclamation will be on all our social media feeds and on the town's website, raising awareness about women's cardiovascular health. I don't think we have any delegations, so we're down to correspondence for information and 7.1, and that is correspondence from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities that, surprise, we won the 2024 FCM Sustainable Communities Award in the Climate Change Mitigation category. I know that at last council meeting, Leon talked a little bit about that. I just want to again thank council and staff. So it's working together. So councils, over the last number of terms, had to make some bold and very forward-thinking decisions in order to move the community forward when it comes to sustainability, staff championing that, creating policies and trying to figure out solutions to energy poverty. Of course, in there, we won the Smart Cities Challenge, but this award is pretty prestigious for the town, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting. It's not just for the staff and for council, but it's for the community that has also, through multiple councils, said, "You got to keep going with this. This is an issue. You have to keep pushing us in this direction." And so, you know, this is a community, it's a sustainable communities award. It's very much an award for the residents and businesses in the town of Bridgewater. So congratulations to all of us. And Councillor Newell and I will be heading tomorrow to Fredericton for the conference, and there's already staff there. I think we have a few staff there because there's a bunch of workshops and stuff, and then tomorrow night, we get the award. Very exciting. Down to staff reports and recommendations, and the first one is going to be regarding the rezoning of Foley's Lane.
Tonight, I'm bringing forward an application for a map amendment to rezone 34 Foley's Lane from the single unit R1 zone to the two-unit R2 zone. The request is for a map amendment to rezone, therefore an LUP amendment. There will be no redesignation, so no MPS amendment. It will remain in the low-density residential designation. On this slide, you can see 34 Foley's Lane outlined in red, and so that's currently zoned as R1, the predominant zoning for the area. As you can see, there is some two-unit zoning in the slightly darker yellow there, and then in the darker, still yellow, that's the comprehensive residential R3 zone. So there is a mix of zoning, but primarily the R1 zone in the area. Here, as I mentioned, it is the low-density residential designation, and you can see the surrounding area is predominantly low-density residential, although there is one property at the top of Foley's Lane that is designated comprehensive residential, excuse me. In this table, you can see the current zone, R1, allows for single-unit dwellings and conversion to two-unit dwellings, and that's only for residential structures that were constructed prior to August 27, 1975. Because this dwelling, 34 Foley's Lane, was constructed after this date, a rezoning would be required to permit a two-unit dwelling on the property. Should a rezoning be approved by council, a maximum of two units would be permitted on the property. A public participation meeting was scheduled on December 17, 2024. However, the meeting was canceled due to lack of registration. One abutting property owner reached out to planning staff upon receipt of their letter to discuss their concerns one-on-one. Concerns were as follows. There was a concern about adequate space on the lot for additional parking, for an additional parking space and turning area. There were privacy concerns due to past neighbors using their backyard, and the complainant noted that a fence would help delineate the property line. Further, there's a concern that the tenant-occupied apartment would decrease the value of property in the area. So the application was reviewed with respect to our residential development policies. The low-density designation accommodates both single and two-unit dwellings. Two-unit dwellings also provide different housing options for predominantly single-unit neighborhoods. This would be a light densification, where just one unit would be added to the existing structure, and further downstream wastewater assessment wasn't required due to there being an existing service lateral on the property. Finally, policy IM6 was reviewed with respect to the IM6 policy. The use is compatible with the adjacent properties, as noted. In terms of wastewater betterment charge, that will be applicable to this new unit should the rezoning go through in order to offset increases in flows on the property. The road network is a local street, but it is adequate to accommodate the increase in traffic and is supported by the policies of the MPS. There was one note that the additional off-street parking space and off-street bicycle parking would be required on this property. There were some considerations. As mentioned, other R1 properties currently permit two units if they were constructed prior to August 27, 1975. And further, because we don't regulate the number of individuals in a dwelling unit, the basement still could be used as a living space despite this rezoning not going through. The rezoning would therefore have some protections in terms of the building code being applicable, so any structural changes would need to be made, including fire separation between the two units. Staff's recommendation that council give first consideration to the proposed map amendments of the land use bylaw and schedule a public hearing for March 10, 2025.
Thank you, Connor. Any questions, Councillor Newell?
Forgive me. So if they can still use the basement, just, sorry, why do they need to do this, or why do they want to do this?
Absolutely. So if they plan to separate the, which is the intention, to remove the stairs from the basement, that would, there needs to be a suitable egress for the property, and basically separating the two units by removing the stairs would make that a second dwelling unit. They do intend to have a tenant in the basement, and so just for privacy concerns, they do want to delineate that. With the current zoning, they would need to keep that door open at the top of the stairs. They couldn't actually close it off.
One of the questions I had was, this actually comes up quite a bit. We have the concerns that were raised from the neighbor, which is, it's great to have that conversation, but it never tells us if, when the conversation was finished, the neighbor felt that there was enough to address their concerns. Like, I know that it says, you know, a fence would help delineate that, but doing this doesn't force someone to put a fence in.
No, of course.
So while it would help, it doesn't, do we know if they're planning on putting a fence?
There currently isn't an application forward, so we can't determine whether or not there is intent to add a fence. I did bring the concern to the applicant's knowledge, and they said that they would consider adding a fence. In terms, I'll just go back to the...
And I understand that some of these concerns come from previous people that were there, so you can't really, you know, you can't judge the new owner based on the previous owner. Those are two different people, but, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, we did bring it to the attention of the applicant, and they said that they would consider adding a fence. In terms of the, I'm addressing the first comment there as well, there is, staff had determined that there is adequate space to add a second parking space on the lot. There isn't a requirement that there be turning space on the property. However, there would be turning space in the front yard. The concern there is the 40% vegetation requirement, but there is adequate space for additional parking on the property.
I would say almost, probably most driveways in Bridgewater don't have turning space within the driveway, so that's...
Yeah, and the concern there was, there is quite a bit of, the neighbors have turned in the concerning party in their driveway quite a bit, and so they were concerned about additional vehicles turning in their driveway. But I did note that there was enough space on the property for the additional parking space and that we could speak to the applicant about the concerns there.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thanks. Other questions, Connor? If not, someone prepared to make it, which is Councillor Caldwell. Thank you.
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater conduct first reading of bylaw number 222, a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw to enable the rezoning of 34 Foley's Lane from the R1 zone to the R2 zone, and as contained in Appendix A, and give notice of intention to conduct a second and final reading of the same at the March 10, 2025 council meeting. And further, that council schedule a public hearing for March 10, 2025 during the regular meeting of council.
Perfect. Seconded by Councillor Wynott. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. You're noting your agenda. The next time is a timed item, so we're, because we have our director of HR coming on to Teams Call later in the agenda, so we're going down to business arising and unfinished business, and we are down to final consideration of Sidewalk Cafe bylaw.
Hello again, council.
I was waiting till you sat down, then. Now we're going to move on.
I saw it come up there. All right, so this is second reading of the proposed amendments to the Sidewalk Cafe bylaw. Just a bit of a review. A sidewalk cafe is a temporary extension of a cafe, restaurant, bar, or other establishment situated and maintained upon an elevated sidewalk or other town-owned property. The intention of the town's Sidewalk Cafe bylaw is to create sidewalk cafes with an open inviting space that allows the public to enjoy the outdoors while simultaneously feeling connected to the surrounding community. It should be noted establishments who wish to serve alcohol on their sidewalk cafe installations aren't required to have a public barrier per bylaw and the regulations from Nova Scotia's Alcohol and Gaming Authority. For those establishments who don't serve alcohol, their sidewalk cafes are permitted to be comprised of solely tables and chairs. In 2023, a complaint regarding blocked sightlines resulted in the initial review of our Sidewalk Cafe bylaw with particular respect to the public barrier component. Over the winter and spring 2024, a review took place and resulted in several amendments, including the following amendments. Public barrier requiring 50% transparency and a prescribed height of three feet, and additional amendments in order to address accessibility, including a 45-degree transition angle from the sidewalk. Ultimately, the amendments were not adopted by the town in advance of our sidewalk cafe season, and this resulted in these applications being approved that were not meeting the newly amended bylaw. So with that, our 2024 season had some work to do. We had to keep an eye on some of these sidewalk cafes that were not meeting the new bylaw amendments, and we actually negotiated with the business owner of the subject installation pictured here to remove the faux greenery that was at the top of the barrier, resulting in two feet of additional sightlines. So it was previously a six-foot barrier in the photo with faux greenery at the top, and then the faux greenery of two feet was removed, resulting in a solid public barrier of approximately four feet. Soon after the April 22 meeting, where the bylaw was amended, staff received a comment that a four-foot barrier height did not address accessibility concerns, particularly sightlines for individuals in seated positions, notably wheelchairs, mobility scooters, or other devices. While this comment was valuable, given that the four-foot barrier was approved under the former bylaw, accessibility considerations, the, excuse me, the public barrier was permitted to continue for the rest of the season despite accessibility considerations being a key consideration for the three-foot prescribed height. Sorry, that's a lot of information here. Near the end of the 2024 season, staff began to evaluate the appropriateness of a four-foot barrier given the subject installation. As part of the evaluation, staff researched average eye height for seated individuals, which was on average 3.6 to 4.26 feet. The height, this height should be a consideration for accessibility, but also individuals sitting at tables inside of these sidewalk cafes. This average eye level was then compared to public barrier heights across Canada, including in cities such as Halifax, Toronto, Vancouver, and Montreal. There was consultation with the three sidewalk cafe owners to try and come to a solution to accommodate the subject cafe installation. While some proposals were brought forward, there was limited ability from the owner to address the concerns given the construction of his public barrier. Therefore, based on the average eye level and public barrier heights from across Canada, staff have determined that a height of 2.3 to 3.3 feet would ensure sightlines for individuals while also providing some flexibility for these cafe owners in terms of design. Further, the amendment to require 50% public barrier transparency added in 2024 was no longer deemed necessary as average eye levels for seated individuals is above that of the prescribed barrier height. Removing the requirement simply provides more flexibility for owners to either add transparency or remove as needed. In reviewing other jurisdictions, staff noted that a cane-detectable barrier was a key requirement, while the requirement for a solid base... While the requirement for a solid base perimeter was already present in the town's bylaw, staff believe clarifying this requirement will provide flexibility and clarity for applicants. Further, to the accessibility concerns, staff briefly analyzed the impacts of the requirement for the 45-degree transition angle from the sidewalk to a temporary sidewalk. The impact of such would have potentially taken away two additional parking spaces or would have necessitated the sidewalk cafe owner to reduce their sidewalk cafe size. Ultimately, upon further investigation into the CSA accessibility standards pictured here, misinterpretation of the 45-degree angle resulted in the former amendment. Therefore, staff are recommending to remove this requirement. Finally, in reviewing the proposed amendments, the requirement for the 45-degree transition angle be removed, the requirement for 50% transparency of the public barrier be removed, changes to the formatting of the public barrier section for clarity will be made, the public barrier height is to be amended from a prescribed three feet to a 2.3 to 3.3 feet height, and a requirement and clearly stated regulations for cane-detectable barriers be added. For the implications to the existing sidewalk cafe owners, King Street Beer currently uses two types of barriers. This, the, these amendments will permit both the, the public barriers which they have. Ferkenstein would be approved under the current and the former bylaw, and like I said, under the current, three-foot barrier would not be permitted. As, as noted before, the 3.3 foot height will not work for them either, given their construction. Questions and comments, please.
Okay. Questions for Connor? I know this is kind of our second, this is the second reading, so it's, we've gone through this a little bit. I don't know if there's any additional comments from folks or questions? Okay. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Counselor Why Not?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater conduct second and final reading of chapter 221, a bylaw to amend chapter 212 sidewalk cafe bylaw with respect to amendments to barriers and temporary sidewalks, as shown in appendix A of document number 24-061E dated February 4th, 2025.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fajir. Further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay. We are down to final consideration, adoption of new Brookside Cemetery bylaw, chapter 219. So I don't know if, so our Director of Community Development was supposed to present this. She got tied up in the city, so the CIO was prepared to, to go through this. If there's any questions that she can't answer, we can defer this, but we have, like the previous one, we have gone through first reading, where I think we had some discussion on that, so I don't know if you want to just walk through it.
Sure. So first reading of this bylaw was conducted on January 25th, and tonight would be second consider, second and final reading of this bylaw if council deems advisable. So this, this bylaw is required as back in 2010, or prior to 2010, well, actually, 20, 2020, the cemetery was operated, maintained by the Brookside Cemetery Commission. In 2010, council gave direction to take the steps to dissolve the commission and replace that with an advisory committee. And that took some time to do, but in 2020, I believe it was, the MLA at the time introduced a private members bill, which enabled the Brookside Cemetery Commission to be dissolved. And then the operation of that cemetery came under the realm of council. The Cemetery Commission had a bylaw that had adopted in 1996, and I believe their amendments done right up until 2012 with that bylaw. And so we've been working under that bylaw, but technically that's the Brookside Cemetery Commission bylaw. So a bylaw for town council is required in order to ensure that we're able to maintain a consistent practice in how we operate the cemetery. So this cemetery essentially takes that, that, the commission's bylaw as the foundationist's bylaw does, so it takes that commission's bylaw as the foundation. There's been some jurisdictional scans to see how, what other towns who operate cemeteries have within their bylaws, and the bylaw has been drafted to reflect that as well as the current practices of the operation of the cemetery. And they, they set out the clear requirements and expectations of both the town that are responsible for the maintenance and operation of the cemetery, as well as the public who may be looking to purchase a lot or a niche, or consider purchasing, purchasing one in the future. So it includes fees for lots as well as niches, interment and disinterment requirements, processes that we have to follow, and rules around memorials, landscaping, and recordkeeping. So, as I say, all consistent with our current practice and uses the former bylaw as the foundation. So not a lot of significant change, just clarity in process. So if council deems it advisable, a second reading would be in order, and then that would, upon public notice in the paper, make this bylaw effective.
Okay. Questions for the CIO? Hearing none. Can I have a motion put on the floor, please? Deputy Mayor?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second and final reading of chapter 219 Brookside Cemetery bylaw as presented in appendix B of document number 25-002.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Fajir. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Everyone's just eagerly anticipating our next item, that's why. I know you're all excited, saving all your energy for this one, which is capital budget. So our, our Director of Finance is gonna walk us through this. I just, I do want to say, because when you get to the slides, some of the slides have numbers that are huge, so I know that people are gonna.
In millions or large?
Millions.
In size.
And I noticed, like, it's like the second slide. It's like, second slide, it's like, 27% debt service ratio. Like, so before everyone, before we start commenting.
It's not the font size that's bothering you.
Before we start commenting on the live stream, let's get through the whole, the whole presentation, because, you know, again, I'm sure council looked at those numbers and went, 27% debt service ratio? That is, I personally can't see a counselor around this table or the next table that's gonna get us to 27%, because some things are gonna have to give, so I just wanna say that. It's a big capital budget. But anyway, I'm just saying, that's like my little preamble so that people don't see the number and do what I do, which is, I guess, start getting heart palpitations. Okay. With that, great tee up.
All right. So this is kind of the first look at the capital budget. We're probably going to end up talking about it again in two weeks' time as a follow-up, because it is a lot of information. So we're gonna go through some things. We've changed up the format of how we're presenting it, which hopefully will make us more efficient as well. So I'm not necessarily going to refer to the capital budget document itself at all. Everything I'm gonna talk about is in the slides, but feel free to ask me questions about things that might be in that document you have a question about that didn't get highlighted during the presentation. So the first thing, this is just kind of a 10-year look at how we're paying for the capital budget. So as you can see, the things that are in the 10-year capital plan, if we look how we're paying for things, the most significant number over that 10 years would be debt of $84.6 million. We're also using $14 million from reserves, $45 million of grants, 7.8 million of gas tax funding, and 13.6 million just from the tax rate that would go, or sewer rate that would go to fund the capital that's in here. So just to give you that first look at how we, how the budget is intending over 10 years to pay for the numbers that are in there. And also you can see the debt service ratio based on the, on the budget as it is in the This is just another look. It gives you all of the 10 years plus the carryforward, and it gives you by category. So if you looked at the budget and you're used to looking at it in the past, previously each year would have every project alphabetically, and then there would be another column to the right which would have department. So we've changed the presentation of this document to be category first. So you'll see fleet are all together, anything transportation-related all together, anything facilities all together, so you can kind of see those kind of comparable things in there. So this just gives you another look, and it's by those categories that we're using this year. So we have an administration category with 2.2 million, business park-related things at 17.9 million, facilities of 3.4 million, fire at 1.7, fleet and equipment at 7.6, $5 million on parks, 16 million on police, transit 730,000, transportation 23.2 million, and wastewater and water treatment plant together at just over 87 million. So gives you a little bit of a, a different perspective, but also gives you the totals that go along with those categories in the, in the budget document. This would be one of the slides the mayor was talking about, so I don't have the little red line that shows 15% line, but 15% is that, you know, the province doesn't ask us a lot of questions. Once we exceed 15%, they'll be a little more interested in us. So you can see in the 31, 32 year, that's where, based on the 10-year capital plan, nothing's been committed, you know, beyond the years we're in, but 27.6 is the highest debt service ratio that we hit, based on the projected revenue and the capital projects and how we're gonna fund them.
So just, just again, to remind people, Kim gets a glass of water, is that, as you, as you go out, council hasn't committed to this. This is kind of a, if we do everything that we want to do, that's where it would land us, but it doesn't, I just don't want people to panic and see the number. You know, we, we can't, you know, live that far beyond our means, so I just want people to understand that we haven't committed to that.
No, and there, there are also a lot of assumptions built into the debt affordability model as well, so we only put in the funding sources we know, timing of when we borrow, assessment growth, all those things. There, it'll change tomorrow, essentially, so it's just really there to, to show you a trend.
Well, and I think it's, and to be fair, to be fully transparent, right? It would be easier just to, we could make, we've talked about this before, we could make assumptions that we're gonna get gobs of funding, but we don't know if we are. We could make other assumptions, and we could, we could make these numbers probably look nicer, but that's not, that's not how we've done it, and that's not how you should do it, so they don't look great, but we'd rather be honest and just say, this is, if we did everything that was on our list, that's what it would look like.
Right. So there's conservative revenue growth, some of the things, for example, a large pump station project could be in the budget for $4 million. The year we put it in the budget, the next year it's presumed we're gonna borrow for that, it's gonna be all started and finished in that fiscal year, and we're gonna borrow the next fiscal year, so the debt repayment starts. However, often projects are multi-year, and then we don't borrow till the year after the project's finished, usually within 12 months, but, you know, it ends up until the year end gets closed, the project's finished off, and then the next fiscal year, because we can only borrow twice a year. So sometimes that's borrowing is pushed out three or four years from the, you know, design or even the start of construction, so this is all presumed based on borrowing the year after we have the project in the budget. So the only thing I can tell you is, look at the trend, see what it's telling you, but these numbers were now, never actually come to fruition specifically because of things like that. You know, we, we budget conservative assessment growth and things like that, so a high assessment growth can change all these things as well. So just, you know, to give you an idea of where, what this budget does to the debt service ratio. So to give you a little bit more to think about with debt service ratio, I thought, why not give them some examples of what could impact the debt service ratio, just to have a little bit of sense of that. So right now, just to build out a model for you, we have a conservative assessment growth, but a 15% increase in the sewer rate. You saw on a previous slide between wastewater and wastewater treatment plant, we've got about $87 million worth of capital projects related to those, and the wastewater rate's going to need to cover those costs, so that 15% sewer rate is just an assumption for this model today. We'll probably talk about the sewer rate at the February 24th meeting to talk to council about where they would like to see that going into the 25, 26 budget, but I had to pick something. So assuming that, you'll see the, the first column of debt service ratio is what you saw on the previous slide. So I had to pick something that would have some kind of impact. So in the budget in, in the year 30, 31, we have a new police facility. Oh, it's over a couple of years, there's design and construction, a couple of years there, but just wanted to take that $15 million facility that we'd be borrowing about $12.4 million for and take that out. So if we took out $12 million, the debt service ratio goes down 3%. So it gives you some sense of, you would like to think if we take $12 million, $12 million out of this budget, that would have a huge impact, right? 3% on your debt service ratio. So it would take it from the year 30, 31, because remember, we borrow the year after we budget the project, it would take it from 27.62 to 24.2. Just to give you, I'm not by any means making a recommendation to council about things to cut, but I needed you to see what one large dollar figure could do to the debt service ratio. So Tammy and I met, and we thought, well, we should show them a little bit more. So what projects do we have in the capital budget? It's on the next slide, that are not ones that are required, that are absolutely mandatory. Intersection improvement, while we could have traffic congestion, it's not something we must do, it's a level of service that council decides on. You know, as we grow, these traffic upgrades, and there's some other things on there too, but just using that as an example, it's not something we have to do, it's something council needs to make a decision on. So taking those out in addition to the facility, so that's total borrowing of 25 million for all those projects over that entire 10 years, so I kind of took a little bit out of each year, because I had to pick something, and I couldn't necessarily pick wastewater projects. So to give you a sense of that, if in addition to that, we cut all those projects and the related borrowing, in the year 31, 32, to be consistent, we would be down to 21.81% debt service ratio. So $25 million of debt gone from this capital budget, and we're still at 21.8% debt service ratio. So it takes a lot of, a lot less borrowing to reduce that. Conversely, more revenue could also affect that, because it's basically debt principal and interest divided by revenue. So there's only two things that can impact that calculation. I'm not always the bearer of bad news. Sometimes there's good things. But just, again, to give council some perspective on, you know, cutting one or two hundred thousand dollars a year, it's just not gonna make a big enough dent on the debt service ratio if that's something that council's concerned about. All right. There are some good news. Reserves, we have lots of money in reserves, so, for now. So the operating reserve, at the end of March, when we get to year end, I'm predicting we'll have about $20.4 million in reserves, in operating reserve, which is, which is pretty significant. We've had some surpluses, and we've been specifically putting money away for some specific projects like 12A to reduce borrowing. We're building up a wastewater reserve and things like that. In addition, you'll see an interest reserve there, and what had happened a few years ago, we updated our reserve policies and said that all interest earned on reserves has to go in, stay in the reserve, it can't be used for general operations. And because we built the reserve up so much, all of a sudden we have over 900, I'm projecting by the end of 2026, we'll have about $996,000 in that interest reserve. That's not earmarked for anything specific, it's just the accumulation of interest at high interest rates current, you know, that we've been experiencing the past couple of years, and having money set aside in the reserves. But as you can see, this budget, just for the 25, 26 capital budget years, projecting to use about $9 million of those reserves to fund this budget, which would leave us at the end of fiscal 25, 26 with still $13 million in operating reserve. And when we go through the public budget document down the road, we'll talk a little more about reserves and the specific ones, but just wanted to give council a sense of, of reserves. In addition to that, we have a capital reserve. It's much smaller. Oftentimes, we don't put things in capital reserve unless we have to, because there's a lot less flexibility. We can't use it for operating things. We can't use it for operating things, operating, like projects that are in the operating budget so much. So you'll see that we have, we're projecting out to be ending next fiscal year with 2.6 million in capital reserves. In addition, gas tax, we've built up a bit of a surplus there, starting the year with 1.2 million, plus another 725,000 coming in in fiscal 25, 26. So you also see in this budget, I'm projecting to use 1.5 million of that in 25, 26. A lot of times projects, we get another grant for something and then we can't stack it with gas tax, so we don't end up using it, even though it had been earmarked in the capital budget. Projects get canceled, changed and whatnot, so we've just managed to build that up a little bit, so I'm projecting to get that used up and then we'll continue to budget to use 725,000 a year. There's also limits on what we can use it for, so sometimes we just haven't been able to use that funding.
Councilor.
Can you just clarify, where does the, like, is the gas tax like from gas funds? Like, I'm not sure where that revenue actually comes from.
Right, so the federal government and the provincial government have an agreement and then the provincial, federal and municipal governments have an agreement, something like that. I've seen it.
People have agreements.
It's called, it's called the Canadian Communities Building Fund now.
It is not called gas tax anymore, so, Canada Community Building Fund, but no one knows what I'm talking about when I say that. And it's, and it's just a grant the town gets every year. A new agreement was signed, we used to get around 625,000 a year and now we're about 725,000 a year. And it's earmarked for certain things. It's all capital related and you can use it for, you know, roads and infrastructure and parks and things like that.
You're going to hear me multiple times rant about how inefficient this gas tax funding is, because it is based on population. So as, as the director said, it's for projects, it's for capital, it's for infrastructure mostly.
You can't use it for.
And yet, we are penalized for having the majority of the infrastructure in Lunenburg County, for example, but we get less than half of what the municipality district of Lunenburg would get, and I don't, like, it's not their fault, I'm not blaming them, but they have a fraction of our infrastructure, but because their population is bigger, they get more than double the amount of money. And this repeats across the country, right? So you can have a large rural community with zero infrastructure getting millions of dollars of gas tax, where a small community like Mahone Bay is a great example too. They still have infrastructure, their roads, they're responsible for their roads. So now you combine that fact that they don't have infrastructure with the fact that what infrastructure they do have, like roads, are paid for by the province and it's not the way, it's not needs-based, it's, it's based on population, which is not at all reflective of the infrastructure in a community. So it's, it's been a bone of contention for most urban communities since it came out. It's just not an efficient way to hand out money, population-based for infrastructure has, there's no connection to those two. So that's, and it's called gas tax, so you'll hear other orders of government will say Canada Communities Building Fund. We call it gas tax because that's what it was called when the Harper government brought it in.
Oh, yeah.
It only changed since 2020, when I, like, subsequent to 2020.
Yeah, in some years they'll double it, but you're just doubling money that for some communities they literally, there are literally communities on the southern shore that cannot use their gas tax money because they don't have eligible projects.
So it just sits in an account?
Sits in reserves and builds in reserves until something, so they've changed the rules a few times and they could use it for this or use it for that. I think they can use it for internet, which there is some frustration that there are communities that don't have internet, they have gas tax money that they could use for internet and yet they're not, anyway.
But I guess to my question, it is money given to us by other levels of government, based on population.
Yeah, yeah. So every year it'll just come in and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would that money be consistent year over year or like, can you kind of bank on?
There's an agreement.
There's an agreement.
That spells out.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the only thing we can't bank on is, so a couple of times, the, the current federal government has doubled it.
COVID, they doubled it with COVID.
For COVID and they doubled it another year, so, but I wouldn't, we wouldn't count, we would never, going back to our transparency, we would never bank on that.
No, of course.
So our end of rant for now. Wait till we get to the financial indicators.
Sounds interesting to me.
All right, so just a couple of things, highlights of the 25, 26 budget. We'll go through it in a little more detail, but just a couple of things to keep in mind. We have a large amount of wastewater projects that are funded by federal and provincial government grants. In the 25, 26 budget, that's pump stations 3, 4, 7 and the gravity sewer. We also have a new project in here for adding power to the business park and I think council has discussed before the Le Havre Aberdeen intersection improvements of 1.5 million. There's also a number of multi-year projects that are in this 25, 26 budget that are in all likelihood year one of a, a couple of years, and that's wastewater treatment plant expansion, Kinsman Field accessibility, the Vino Bridge pedestrian crossing, the wastewater upgrades on Jubilee and the Generations Active Park. One other thing to keep in mind about the 25, 26 numbers is that Empire Street repaving and water was awarded in the 25, 26 fiscal year and that report at that time from engineering had, also had pricing related to wastewater replacement on Empire Street and that request was deferred to the capital budget deliberation, so council will need to make a decision on, on that, keeping in mind the water and paving was previously awarded and is in the capital carry forward budget, it is not in with the 25, 26 amounts. We're going to talk very briefly about capital carry forwards because it's in the capital budget. We are at $28.9 million of capital carry forwards. Exit 12A and the business park work could be done by March 31st and handed over to the town, but, but it's not clear on, on when that will be, so we left it on the carry forwards because it affects funding and some other things, but that, that could shift in the next, you know, six weeks as we have some more communications with them. St. Philip's Street, the stormwater project is also scheduled to happen this spring, so that project, again, is kind of carry forward from previous years. And so the remaining projects that are carry forward are $5.6 million, so quite a bit of difference there, but just to give you some perspective, there's a couple of really big things, so the rest is about 5.6. We will be bringing the capital carry forward list for council approval at the February 24th meeting, as well as any pre approvals that staff may be looking for. Those will both be presented in more detail at that time. Okay, so this, we're finally to the 25, 26 projects and we're going to go through them by category. So the first category is business park. Most of the things that I've highlighted in blue in these slides are things that are, the amounts have changed or the project has new and wasn't previously in the 10-year capital plan or in kind of the same degree that it's in there now. So those are the things I'm going to focus my time on, but certainly open to questions and the entire 25, 26 list are in these slides, but we're just going by category. So the first one is the power at the business park for $250,000. There's reserve money for that of 185,000 and the rest would be paid for from capital from operating. These are also subject to change as the capital budget's still a little bit in motion these days, so some of the funding could shift a little bit before the next version. The next category is facilities and the total for facilities for 25, 26 is $235,000 with various projects that I wasn't intending to talk about.
Unless you want to.
Unless you want to, so I guess ask questions as I go. If you don't see any lines highlighted, I probably wasn't planning to discuss it.
The only thing I've mentioned on the parking lot is the 150,000, just for clarification to Matt, that's not the entire parking lot for the BMA.
Correct.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for council.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Facility condition assessment program, that was a program where we're going through facility by facility to understand the condition of them. Yeah, correct? Yes, you'll see the facility condition assessments throughout the 10 years as we work through facility by facility. Okay. The next category is fire, so again, $245,000 in the 25, 26 budget for fire-related projects. Fleet and equipment, we have 1.2 million through various vehicle and equipment items. The next category is parks, so there's $368,000 budgeted for parks in 25, 26. So a couple of things to note, the Generations Active Park is there for $40,000 for design. There, I believe council was provided with a report, but if there's direction change on the timing of this, I have not changed this from, from previous information.
Councilor.
Sorry, it wasn't on that, it's on the, the parks.
Oh, okay.
Do you mind?
No, go ahead, yeah.
Jumped the gun a little bit there. It's about the, so Kinsman Field accessibility, I know we've discussed this issue, but I don't, I'm just misremembering, I don't recall having a plan in place or approving a plan for a half million dollars.
No, council had given us direction to bring forth an option for consideration for council prior to budget. So Matt has, might want to come up to the mic to speak to that, but we haven't had a formal report come to council to say, here are your options, but staff have gone out and done an assessment of what, what the option is for accessibility and I believe you feel that this is the most, I guess, I want to say practical, but feasible option.
So what, what staff have done, completed, sorry, completed to date was working with the regional accessibility coordinator to look at those options. She can, she has completed a draft report, which we vetted somewhat, so we've asked her to, to come back with a couple, we have a few questions, but based on the recommendations in which she's suggesting, that has resulted in me putting in more money in the budget at this point to at least give us the opportunity, after council gives direction, to actually take action on some of those recommendations that she's asked, whether it be a very long pathway from various points of, from the park, from either Maple or Crescent or from behind, on Alexander through the church property. So there's a few options, but all of them would necessitate a fairly significant amount of investment, so I'm trying to.
To placeholder.
It's, yeah, I guess that's probably would have been the shortest answer. I'm not very good at being concise.
We put the money in the budget, we haven't approved any.
Put the money in the budget, report comes to council later and it's, we have the option if we want to proceed.
And you'll see that probably a theme of, a theme for many of my projects.
But at least that way there's no surprise later and we're sitting there wondering where the money is going to come from, right? Better to have the money as a placeholder and then not.
And it is broken up over two years, so it's, would be 125,000 this year, so if the option is a less, I guess elaborate solution than the 125 may be like all, all you spend, but it's proposed to be spent over two to give a little bit of flexibility there.
Good.
And then the next one I wanted to identify was the dog park lighting, as I know that was my, I've requested counsel some time ago, so that's in the 25, 26 capital budget. And we did, we do have a dog park reserve with about $13,000 in, so we're funding as much of that project as we can with the money that is already set aside in reserves.
Councilor.
Where does the dog park reserve come from? Is that just?
We, we sell things like park benches and things like that, that have memorial things and, and it's been, it, the reserve has barely grown since 2020 when I came, so I assume it was more one of the park was first established.
When we first opened it, we sold like little bones that you could put on.
Yeah, like I've seen like the, the dog bone plates that are along the fence and whatnot.
There was quite a few as we were working towards getting the park going, there were quite a few donations made.
So it's just kind of been accumulated in there. I went through the reserve descriptions and identified there was, it was not specified what in the park it had to be spent on, so it seemed like a reasonable project to use that on.
Great.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the total for parks of 368,000. The next one is police at 125,000 and that's related to fleet vehicles.
Councilor, yeah?
I was just curious what the vehicle is, like, what's the lease buy of vehicle?
Which, which specific?
I don't know, like what it, like what it is, or like, I guess generally we buy our vehicles, right?
Yeah, so lease vehicle is a separate, it's different, it's not a patrol vehicle, right? So it's used for, the chief is here.
So it's used by, by both sections, it's rotated every three years. So sometimes we buy them, we keep them as an added vehicle for training, for administration and so on, so we're replacing a 2015 Honda, or 2013 Honda CRV that's been in the fleet for 11 years now, so transmission is going, so rather than give it back, it's cheaper, we've already invested a bunch of money into it by leasing it, so it's cheaper to buy it, just for the purchase.
Thanks.
The next category is transit and as you're aware, we've been putting bus stop improvement plans in place and that's just a continuation of the, the bus shelter program.
That's great. I was just curious, so of the, like, does the 17.5 from this year, or sorry, the, like, the 130,000, like, how many stops does that do, or like, what's the cost of, like roughly per stop?
Right, so the 130,000 includes any of the transit improvement that's in there for 10 years.
Okay, yeah.
This year's allotment is 17.5 and the rest is more than I can answer. The Director of Engineering, I think we've been putting two a year in, but I, it doesn't say that in the notes.
Yes, I, I can provide the, the, staff came to council with a 10-year capital plan for the bus stop improvements and I can provide that, it is, staff do look at that on a yearly basis. So depending on what stop, so we have 25 stops, I believe, bus stops, so it could be a range of just creating a landing spot, so for the ramp to go down and land on, concrete pad with tactile plate for safety, it also makes the stop more pronounced, it's a stop, not just a grass, a section of grass, to the inclusion of benches in some locations or putting in shelters. At this point, I believe we, the last iteration or review of the plan internally, there's at least three shelters being installed, of which we expedited the one for North Street and by the hospital that is yet to be installed, and the next one will be Desert Rais Museum, that'll be a bus stop. I can't remember the fourth one, but I can provide that plan if need be.
I do know, like, I was just curious, like roughly what does one of those shelters cost?
Don't quote me to exact dollars, but they're around $13,000, 12 or 13. We did get a bigger shelter this year, we just tried to include it, include accessibility into the design, so that's why it's a little longer, so you see there's an in and a note, where the pre, when we started talking about the bus shelters, there were I think eight by 12 and now they might be eight by 15 or 14, just for that extra accessibility factored in. So a little bit more money than what we started with.
Thank you. I wouldn't be going too far, Matt, as we get to the next category.
And in the past, even after the budget's been passed, we have received funding for some of the shelters in, in last year, but I don't think we had known that. So sometimes we get small grants for things like that, but in this case, we haven't made any assumptions. The next category is transportation, so it could include anything related to roads, streets, sidewalks in that category. So there's a number of things there, including traffic light upgrades at Aberdeen and North. So you can see this year's budget has 100,000 in, but the total budget is 3.1 million for that over the 10 years. Traffic lights at Aberdeen and Le Havre, 1.15 million this year. You can see there's, the budget's slightly higher because some of the work was done in 24, 25 to plan for that one. The next one is sidewalk and bridge deck, along with the Aberdeen and Le Havre area and Vino Pedestrian Bridge, a 10-year budget of 1.3 million with 100,000 in this year's budget for planning. And Vino's Bridge has a number of different names, but on your way to Parkview on King Street where the lights are.
We're familiar.
Vino's Bridge. So that's the estimate to put a pedestrian bridge and get our services across there.
I have a question about traffic lights. The lights that, that DOT put at exit 12, which are, in my opinion, I'm not an expert, but incredibly dangerous, the ones that you can't see if they're on until you're right at them.
Wait, I thought those were broken.
Those are LED, aren't they?
They've got, they've got louvers, so if you go to exit 12, you can. They've got, they've got louvers. So if you go to Exit 12, you cannot see if the light is green, red, or yellow until you're maybe 20 feet away from it. It seems like it defeats the purpose of a traffic light, which is for safety. I've received a number of complaints, which I then say it's, you gotta call it province, not in town. But I don't know, I don't know how we prevent ourselves from buying those. Is it something that you would just, if you drove out there, you'd go, I would never buy that light, we don't have to worry about it? Or does it need to be direction from council that we do not, won't allow staff to buy those kind of lights? Like, how do we deal with that? Because they're terrible.
So a couple of things. So what we've done in terms of the projects progressing this year, we provided our tender specs previously. So the lights that we have at, sorry, Victorian York would be those what should be used at Aberdeen. So we're being consistent, both with our tender specifications and also what we'd have in inventory for repairs. Also based on this conversation, I can pass that along to the consultant, which we meet with biweekly.
Okay. So like I looked at it and went, this is, because it's the newest lights I've seen. Please tell me this is not the new standard. Because the new standard, again, anyone who's driven through, we drove to them today, it, to me, it's an incredible safety hazard.
I thought they were broken. I didn't know they were new. I thought they were broken.
I've had people say they slammed on the brakes as they got closer, thinking, oh, the light's out, it's now a four-way stop because the power's out. The car behind them doesn't know that, so they smashed into them. Like, it just. You know what I'm talking about, right? Have you all seen those? I don't know what they're thinking, Deputy Mayor.
I don't even know where I heard this, so I don't know if there's any accuracy to it, but my understanding was that they, it's a filter that was put on because people were going through the red light at the lights before it to get to that green light. So you can't see that it's a green light, so you don't go through the red light to get to that one.
So it's like a safety.
That makes sense.
It was implemented as a safety thing. So if that was the case, is that, that would go through a traffic authority and be assessed for safety.
Yes, you would. I mean, I can see where that's coming from in terms of that point, but I'd have to make some inquiries. I know that I heard, I don't receive all the complaints directly anymore. So I heard a little bit of rumbling that while in my office, but I'd have to follow up with the province to see what they have to say. But again, passing that feedback along to our consultant who are working on our intersections is more than appropriate.
I mean, that's a very plausible explanation, but at the same time, I think you've created a problem by trying to solve a problem that wasn't really a, was it really a problem? The problem is you got two lights too close together.
Yeah.
There's your solution. But anyway, that's not, it's not in town. But I was just, my concern was in town, making sure this wasn't some new standard and we were going to buy these lights that were going to cause a lot of concerns. All right. Did you have a question?
I was just going to say, I mean, to your, if it was, if it is safety, it sounds like you replace, they replaced one safety solution with another safety problem. Because I get more of your response, like, I go through there and I feel, like I've seen many people confused and think, I've never witnessed an accident, but it seems like they addressed ones allegedly, right? Solved one safety problem with another, this is a safety problem.
That was my question about lights. I'm just happy to see all these intersection upgrades, and I'm looking forward to the La Havre and Aberdeen intersection upgrades this year, and the extended turning lane. And I just want to remind people that's going to be a lot of pain when there's road construction, but it's going to be worth it. Sorry to interrupt.
All right. And the next slide is transportation also. And so the one thing to note there is that the pavement is budgeted at 800,000. Normally, the annual amount is 600,000, but engineering had budgeted 800,000 for that. Not necessarily to go further, but as a result of price increases and things like that that have been experienced, and they slightly exceeded the budget in the 2425 years. So they're fairly confident that they can get that amount of paving done. But it is, you know, something that council can, can make a recommendation to adjust if necessary. So that is two point, just under $3 million for transportation-related projects. The next one is wastewater treatment plant, and specifically things related to the plant, not wastewater pipes. So there is $780,000 there. The one that's highlighted is a 15.5 million wastewater treatment plant expansion that's planned out over a 10, over the 10-year capital budget, but just the planning for that at $150,000 this year.
And just on that, that plant expansion is not a doubling of the plant, it is a phased approach. So this is like a phase one of multiple phases that would happen over a 20- or 30-year timeframe.
And that is just to expand the plant, to increase the capacity of the plant. We have now, the expansion's probably not the right wording, but capacity increasing of the existing plant. That is, the 15 million includes no new, no new plant, I guess. And the last category in 2526 is wastewater. So a couple of things. The first highlighted one is Empire Street, and that's the one I mentioned before that council needs to make a decision on as it was deferred to the budget process, and that is 1.3 million dollars, most of which is being funded by gas tax, because we kind of had an excess in the gas tax reserves. So 900,000 being used and borrowing of 400,000. In addition to that, a new project that's proposed in this 10-year plan that wasn't there in the past is wastewater upgrades on Jubilee Road for a total 1.58 million dollars, but 130,000 of that for design work in 2526.
Deputy Mayor.
That item was moved forward from?
Wasn't really previously in there.
It wasn't in there at all?
Yeah, it's a new, proposed new project.
I just had a question a couple of slides ago. Sorry, I'm late, but on the transportation, it had to do with the North Parkade improvements. We've got 150,000 budgeted for aesthetic improvements, and I guess it's a waterproofing membrane, is it, Matt? That would?
That's not what's in the 2526 year. Like, that, if you look, there's 650,000 in over the 10 years allocated to that project.
So it's 150?
And 150 is for 2526.
Okay. So would we be just looking at railing improvements for next year, or?
So the North Parkade saga continues for me. A little light hardness there. So we've gone through an iteration of having an assessment done just prior to me starting in 2018, 1920. We've been talking about the North Parkade over the last five years with respect to how it impacts downtown parking, if we removed it, its condition. Looking at the cycle of assessments, we're right back at having it assessed again, which was supposed to be this year. So we're just getting the RFP out for it to be structurally assessed, to make sure that we can continue to invest in it. Again, so this would be a placeholder for some work to happen next year, subject to a report coming to council on next steps.
So there's a cost to have it assessed, or?
Yes. So the staff are going by the last assessment was between 10 and 20,000 to have it assessed. It's a non-destructive testing assessment, so to speak. So going in there and doing, looking under, somebody who was trained in that, and to provide us a recommendation on the repair and maintenance over the next five, 10 years. Should we continue to invest in it? Like, you know, kind of one end to the other in terms of, in terms of the options, with hopes that the staff come back to council and said, we have a new maintenance plan, it requires this amount of annual maintenance, in terms of some of the upgrades that council and staff have suggested, with the aesthetic improvements, the railing, replacement of the deck itself, those are additional costs based on the 10-year plan. And then we can start implementing it in our 10-year and not have to really worry about the reassessment, kind of being a barrier. It still should be reassessed every five years, but we're hoping that we can make some headway on some of these longstanding projects.
So what do we spend on average, like just the regular maintenance?
In terms of regular maintenance, in an average year, the 10-year, the 10-year implement, the plan from the 2019 assessment was between 5 and $10,000 per year. Right now, staff have made sure that the railing isn't falling down or missing sections, repairing potholes or some small section of concrete. So we haven't been investing anywhere near 10,000 per year at this point.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the update.
Good. So the next slide is moving into the 2627 year. So rather than put all the projects up here, I've kind of summarized it into the total at the end for 2627. Anything that's wastewater treatment plant grant funded is in one line called DMAF storm separation and pump station projects. They're commit, those projects are fairly committed to, so that you'll note they're not there. So again, just highlighting the things that are newer or the amounts have changed for the 2627 year. So you'll notice year two of the Kinsman Field Accessibility, there was 125,000 in 2526, and another 125,000 in 2627. The Vino Pedestrian Bridge, in the previous year, it was budgeted for design work, and there's 1.2 million in 2627 for construction. In addition to that, there's Aberdeen and North Street, 1.5 million dollars for work on that intersection, and also the wastewater treatment plant expansion item, the 15 million, there's 400,000 in the 2627 year towards that project. 2728, a number of projects there, one being facilities related to the Public Works Garage. So 1.2 million dollars towards those projects over a few years. And 2728, the budget amount is 600,000. The Kinsman Field Accessibility, year three at 125,000. Generations Active Park, budget of 600,000. The Aberdeen North, kind of year three and not at 1.5 million. Traffic light upgrades at High and Dufferin, the first year for that at 125,000, and the overall project being budgeted at 1.625. And 6.5 million for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. And the total budget for 2728 is just over 17 million dollars. 2829, a total budget of 22.2 million dollars. You'll see, again, the Public Works Garage facility, year two, at 600,000. Traffic light upgrades at High and Dufferin at 1.5 million. The previous year, 2728, had the design work. New project in their master plan study, St. Philip Street Optional Future Water Main, so things that we're looking at in the future related to that. And again, 6.5 million towards wastewater treatment plant expansion, for the total of 22.2 million. The 2930 budget is 12.5 million dollars overall. You'll see the first year, the police facility is introduced into the 10 years at a million dollars in year one. Traffic lights at Victorian Veterans Memorial Bridge, the first year of that with 100,000 for design work. Wastewater treatment plant expansion of 2 million dollars, and again, more master plan work for 2 million dollars.
Councilor.
Back a slide, probably for Matt. So there's supply and install new set of traffic signals at High Street and Dufferin. So did I recall that the developer of the development across the street from the top of Dufferin was supposed to contribute to that if it reached a certain traffic volume?
The Marshawn?
Yeah.
Exhibition, or?
No, no.
The developer at Dominion and High, the developer at Old Town Hills is supposed to contribute to those traffic lights.
Not the one at the top of Dufferin.
No, so, sorry. But you're not wrong, that we talked about Marshawn would have to contribute to that if the traffic.
Have a traffic impact analysis.
So yeah, we did complete a, the master plan studies, and in this case, coupled with that, we did a traffic operation study, which I know I still need to come to council and provide the overall strategy or implementation plan. It was through the traffic operation study and the master plan exercises that it was identified with the amount of growth that we expect in that quadrant of town, that the lights would actually be required at High and Dufferin. And, but you are correct that the, through the development agreement for Old Town Hills, the lights are required by Tim Hortons.
Yeah. And then with the, with the other Marshawn's development agreement that we just approved a few years ago, that was a 30-year plan, and that did have triggers for requirements for traffic impact analysis to be completed. That would identify where there would be intersection improvements required. So that may be another trigger. And in addition to that, council is looking at development charges, and hopefully by that point in time, we have those in place. And those look at wastewater, but can look at intersection improvements, road improvements, all infrastructure.
I think this would be a question for you. So the lights that are here, we're talking about on Dufferin and High, are we at that point now where those lights should be implemented with the traffic that's there now, or is through the study, I mean, is that, are we there now, or are we approaching that capacity?
The study was completed in 2021. So we did, and we provided, staff provided traffic data for that. So it was, it was up to date, it wasn't old information. Sometimes we were relying on dated information. The, if I remember correctly, that study was based on a 20% because we were right in the middle of COVID. And so it was really hard with that data to say, how do we factor in where our volumes were a little bit lower? So I believe we factored in a 20% growth for the need for those intersections. So we're not really at that point now.
Okay.
But it is something that through, and I guess, what I was going to say is that most of these infrastructure plans or studies really should be completed on at least some type of frequency. So staff have built in the 10-year capital plan, or at least make notes to, okay, if a study was done in 2021, it might need to be reviewed in 2031, as an example. Or if we see a significant amount of growth, that might trigger it.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
All right. 202930, total is just over 12.5 million dollars. We were on that one, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
We had to back up. Sorry. 203031. So 28.6 million dollars in that year. The highlights of that are Centennial Trail Bridge improvements. So you'll see there's 2.9 there, 2.9 million dollars for that over the 10 years, but there's 670,000 in that particular year. The construction of a police facility is in at 14 million. And the last one is, our transit buses will oddly enough be nearing the end of their useful life. Time flies. So we've budgeted 600,000 as an estimate for replacement of those. 203132, 6.6 million dollars. The one significant item to note, there would be traffic light upgrades at Victoria and Veterans Memorial Bridge. Design work was in a previous year, and that's the project. 203233, a total of 4.5 million dollars. And you'll see all transportation projects that were highlighted based on master plan study reports that the engineering department has. The 203334 capital budget has 2.3 million dollars. The most significant there being, again, a master plant, results of master plan study recommendation at 500,000. And the 203435, the total is 1.2 million dollars. So you'll note, the final two years really doesn't have a lot of significant projects in. We've been very focused really on the A E years, but I suspect by the time, two years from now, we'll have a lot better idea of what's coming in those last two years of the 10-year plan. It mostly contains, you know, vehicle replacements, paving, sidewalks, things like that. So that's the end of the individual projects. So we just, are there any other questions, I guess, on the budget items?
So obviously, this is the only time we have to ask questions. There will be opportunity to ask questions at, obviously, at next council meeting, but also as you go through this, you can ask the Director of Finance any questions that may come up. I know that sometimes it's like you leave the meeting, you're like, oh, I should have asked that question. I know that's what happens to me. I should have probably announced at the beginning of the meeting, there will be a talk Bridgewater session next week, Thursday. So council will be out. So we'll advertise that and make the public very aware. So council will be out all day, I think, and into the evening in a couple of locations, just to engage with the public. And then we'll be doing another one later, so it's not the only time for that either. But that'll also be our opportunity, you know, is to interact with people who just happen to be walking by, and they have questions or raise any points as well. So. So, and those questions we can bring back to a future meeting. But are there any more questions now that have come from this? Very light, light presentation. It does go to show you, I mean, I think, I believe the public has an understanding that there is a lot, we've been very open about the infrastructure challenge that we have. And it just takes, it's all consuming. But it's the culmination of not doing enough for many, many decades. Like, it's not, you can't point at any one person or council or like even decade. It's too many years of being desperate to not raise the tax rate. So you couldn't have the money to do the infrastructure projects until you had to pay the bill. So this is where we land with numbers that look like that. But I think we've explained that to people. And at some point, you've got to do it so that you don't have to do it again. Anyway, so that's my little spiel. And if there's no other questions, then I'm sure we'll be emailing you some.
All right, so just a couple of things to keep in mind. So you've seen the capital budget for the first time. There's a few things that I know will change by the time you see it again. I think engineering department has some new estimates for pump station three, for example, that I got on Friday. But the presentation was already ready. Engineering was, called me up, said, got a new number. And I was like, no, no, too late.
Is it high or low? Maybe we don't want it.
Yeah. If I'm telling you, it's not low. So there are some things that will change the next time you see it, but certainly we should be thinking about direction coming from council to staff so that, you know, outside of the few things that we've got more information on, you know, what are the things that council either didn't see in the plan they would like and looking at that 10 years? The next time I'm back here with budget-related things is February 24th. We're going to talk about the carryforward list in more detail. We are going to talk about any pre-approvals so that projects can get tendered early and out before construction season usually. And then we'll talk about the wastewater rate and where we see that going for 2526 just so that we can get the operating budget fairly accurate when we bring it to council. And then also perhaps some planning for the long-term with wastewater rates as part of that discussion. And then we are back with the operating budget specifically for the first time on March the 17th. And so there's several meetings scheduled for the budget, but the first operating one is on the 17th.
Any questions on those items? All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like that format, by the way. I like how you changed it.
I can't believe we got through that in less than an hour.
Yeah.
It's the format.
It all comes down to the format. That's really what it was. So, well done. Thank you. We're back up now to 9.2, right? That's our, am I? Yeah, 9.2. So I know that we have Lynn on teams, or our Director of HR, the MJSB. And she's going to go through the salary review for non-union employees.
And we have the technology tonight.
Yes, we struggled through it last week. We have the technology.
Better not jinx it.
I don't know if we can hear Lynn now.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Lynn, we can hear you.
Wonderful. I will, I'll share my presentation. I don't, Tammy, did you, you expected me to share from my desktop, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
You're with me as I go to slideshow.
Perfect.
Great, okay. Let me know if anything goes wonky with this, but I will, I'll jump right into it. I know you're a little bit ahead of schedule, but.
That doesn't mean you get like an hour and a half.
That's a third. Yeah. I will, I will be much briefer than an hour and a half. So just a quick overview. So the current salary program was implemented in 2021. It was adopted by town council and it was a band, band or grade structure to administer the salaries within the organization. So that's a common practice within, and best practice for salary administration. The all, all non-union positions were evaluated using a consistent set of criteria, which is outlined in the policy. The town salary structure had nine salary grades with nine steps within each grade. And by policy, the salary grades were adjusted by CPI on an annual basis. So whatever the CPI was based on policy would be updated on April the 1st. And so in the personnel policy manuals, section 7.11 states that town council will review the salary structure in four to five years to ensure that the salaries reflect market rates. So that is what we did. We were, the MJSB HR Shared Service was engaged to do the salary review in late 2024. So here is where we're at. So the philosophy is really around to pay at market. And you want to do that for recruitment and retention strategies. We took 24 positions and benchmarked those against other municipalities. 12 municipalities in total, as well as the AMA Salary Survey. So we looked at, the list is there, but Chester, MODL, Toronto, East Hands, Wolfville, Kings, Amherst, Cumberland, West Hands, Colchester, Annapolis, and Queens. So what we do is part of our evaluation process is we do what's called a job match. So we take the job descriptions as well as the salary data and we make sure that we're comparing, I explain it as apples to apples. So it may be a Granny Smith and a Red Delicious, but they're apples to apples, not apples and bananas. So it's important that we have a match based on responsibilities, qualifications, and years of experience based on the position. So we don't just look at position titles, which is very important. So to make sure that we have the best match as we evaluate and look at salaries for each position. Any questions on that?
Not so far.
Perfect. I'll keep going. So the other methodology that factors in in a market study, when you look at salary, salaries or compensation, is you want to make sure they're affordable and you have the ability to pay. So we actually took the salary data and looked at what it would cost over a three-year period to make sure that what we were recommending was going to be affordable for the town as well. So we'll go through that a little bit. So the results and the recommendations, based on the market data, there are some adjustments that are needed for the salary grades. The market data indicates the largest adjustments to be made at grade one and grade nine. And we'll go through that. Excuse me. This allows the bands to remain competitive over time as the market shifts and between the salary reviews. So we want to make sure that, one, we're still competitive based on market, but also maintaining affordability. So like I said, we've looked at the cost over a three-year period to make sure that it remains affordable for the town. The recommendation is also to reduce the steps from, within the grades, from nine steps to eight steps just to manage the number of steps within each pay grade. There's also the recommendation to move two positions to the next grade to align better with market. Those two positions are the Planner One as well as the Development Services Manager role. For the Planner One position in particular, there is, between Planner One and Planner Two, there was a two-step difference. And we found too that, based on the market, that it made better sense to align those as well as the market rate for the Planner One position. We were certainly, I would say, undercompensating for that role. So it made sense to move that to the next, the next pay grade. This would be the comparison. Now, this amount here, based on the current scale, we included a 2% CPI increase. I believe we are anticipating that CPI will be less than 2%. So there will be additional, additional reduction in the amount. So the total annualized increase of 109,000 will be less than that. But if you look at the grades, we had grade one through eight, but we had a six and a 6A. We're recommending aligning grades one through nine, which means 6A becomes seven. And you'll see the differences in the salaries there, like I mentioned. The biggest differences are between grade one and grade nine. And again, that was based on the market data. So we would recommend adjusting those salaries. Those are, you know, the bigger increases that you're seeing across the grades. But we would recommend that to remain competitive within the market. Any questions on that part?
Any questions from council? Nope.
Excellent. Great. That's it?
Yeah, it's, I.
That was how many minutes?
That's pretty good. That's, you win. Yeah, I don't, any comments or? I mean, we've talked about our need to remain competitive. We, you know, job, you know, when you have vacancies, there is a cost associated with that, right? You have a loss of productivity, you have a cost of hiring someone, you have a cost of training someone and a cost of, again, productivity as you ramp them up to speed. And then it puts pressure on your other staff who are still here as they do multiple jobs. And we know, we know how busy our staff is. So to be competitive in the market will help us, you know, to be able to retain people. And so it's, it looks scary, but it's necessary. And I think, Lynn, you did a great job of explaining, you know, you talked to a number of municipalities across the province, talked to, so for AMA is the Association of Municipal Administrators. So basically all the CAOs and deputies across the.
Just about every municipal position. They, they just did a survey in 2024.
Right, so these numbers aren't coming out of thin air. They're, they're numbers to line us up with everyone else. Council, please.
Just had a question. It doesn't really, that doesn't really fit in the box of the, I'm just wondering if when the town hires or contracts, does term positions? How does that, do we have something that we work with as a template for if they're not a full-time employee and they don't?
So depending on the position, like summer students, we don't run them through the job evaluation methodology because there's really not comparable positions there. So we have a summer student rate that we have for, you know, whether it's our recreation program, summer program students, those types of things. If it's a term position, like a one or two-year contract, we will run that through our job evaluation tool. So we have a tool that sets out all those criteria. We have an evaluation committee made up of three individuals. So Director of Finance, Director of Community Development, and either Lynn or Ashley are involved in that review. So they review the description versus the criteria and then make a recommendation to myself about placement, what band and what step.
Okay, so thank you.
Good question. Any other questions for the Director of HR? Okay, hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Council, why not?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the proposed salary ranges as presented in Table 1 with an effective date of April 1st, 2025. And further, that council give notice that at the February 24th, 2025 council meeting, council will consider amendments to the personnel policy to implement these changes with an effective date of April 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Lynn, appreciate it.
Great.
Thanks, Lynn.
Have a good evening.
Okay, you too.
Thanks.
That brings us to the end of, that's got to be the shortest meeting that contained a budget ever. So yes, that rolls back the meeting we had two weeks ago. Okay, so we're like averaging out. We're doing well this year. Perfect. That, yeah, that concludes this meeting. We have our discussion session next week. Don't forget, bumps to the Tuesday because it's Family Day on the Monday. Yeah, so with that, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Council Newell and Council Fajir. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.